Public or which stands.
All right, first order of business of the minute.
The move.
First and second, all those in favor of the movement, please say aye. Both. You know, it's like. Full of.
And. Right after the.
First and second, all those in favor of adding planning and zoning, say aye.
All right.
Both. Uh, people of consent agenda. Bills that places change over time, game of chance, Franklin's Air Force Base Sportsman Club, the March financial report. This is cool. The consent agenda. Second, I'm just giving a moment to say aye. I. Both. Promise, is there anyone here to speak today that the item is not on the agenda? You're here to talk about something not on the agenda, can you raise your hand? You, you don't have something on your agenda? If you'd like to speak now, you are more than welcome. Might be number seven for the twenty twenty six full of the budget, okay? Very good, well then we will. Go to the next item of planning and zoning.
And I'm Chair, members of the Commission, I have one item today, it is to consider the applications. Flat application of Jay Hyder or Patrick Hyder Farmstead addition consisting of two lots on thirteen point two two racers. Uh, the property is located. Near the intersection of County Road ten and County Road fifteen, City Niagara is located nine miles to the southwest for reference. Uh, as far as the land use plan, it's considered our agricultural district, it does conform the goal policies of land use plan. According to the zoning ordinance, it's within our agricultural preservation district, all the building envelopes. Proposed lots you conform with the performance standards there within. Uh, as far as the background. Uh, the flat consists of two lots, six point three four acres and eight point eight eight acres. Uh, the purpose of the plat is to split an existing building site off the property. Uh, both lots would share the existing access, no additional accesses would be permitted to Coward Road. Uh, I have not heard from Agnes Township at this time. Uh, as far as staff comments, uh, I would request. Uh, based on my conversations with Mr. West, the Highway Department. That a seventy five foot road we ease must be shown on County Road ten on the flat. Which is consistent with a current county commission policy. Oh, I staff has no concerns and the planning commission. Did recommend approval with the condition below, so with that, I would recommend approval. With following conditions, the township recommendations we received prior to the plat being recorded. And the seventy five foot County Road need to be shown on the plat prior to it be recorded. Cool, cool, second.
All right, we have first and second, any other discussion? All those in favor of the movement, please say aye.
Aye.
Both. Great. The twenty twenty six budget goals and priorities. I'm assuming that by most folks are here to visit, um, so everybody will get five minutes with your, if that's the topic that you want to discuss right now. Um, when you come up to the podium, please just state your name for the record and anybody want to go first?
Thanks, thank you so much for the time, I am Wendy Blunt, and the Director of the Grand Forks Public Library. And I just wanted to talk about the recommended thirteen percent cut. The community cut commission for library. Public libraries aren't a luxury, they're essential infrastructure that strengthens our communities, especially during times of economic hardship. Libraries are often the first stop for people in crisis, place to help, get help finding a job. Or accessing housing resources, building resumes, starting a startup. At a time when more people are facing layouts and financial instability, public library is a lifeline. It offers free access to technology, job support, entrepreneurship tools, tax help and educational materials for learners of all ages. We are the only free location for getting ready for kindergarten, pre K education and literacy skills. Now more than ever, women's recognize that libraries are vital to strong and resilient society. Grand Forks Public Library seems consistent used by the community up to the numbers that we had pre COVID. I understand that the twenty twenty six budget is going to be challenging for everyone. However, I am here to ask that reconsider Commissioner Bierte's suggestion to reduce the county's contribution to the Grand Forks Public Library by thirteen percent. This would mean a reduction of over a hundred thousand dollars one year, a cut and for to me. As you know, the library is a service-based organization with seventy six of our budget going towards wages and benefits. The remaining twenty four percent is largely fixed expenses such as heat, water, building maintenance. As well as books and other materials for patrons. A cut of this magnitude would force us to reduce staff, which would inevitably lead to shorter service hours and fewer opportunities to serve our community. Simply put, the library could no longer afford to say open seven days a week. And many of the programs and services our community relies on would be reduced. It would be a painful loss, especially now with so many in our communities depend on the library's connection. Oh, and the tool to be forward.
Can I? Question, um. Do you know approximately, um, how many people utilize the library on an annual basis?
Annually, it's over four hundred thousand people.
Madam Chair, and Board of Commissioners. Here today to speak on the work of events, the extension Grand Forks County. I have recommendations to the budget guys, I don't like speaking publicly. But I feel this is very important, so I'm going to do it too. Um, N D S U extension has broad reach in our community, not just city of Grand Forks. They support programs throughout the county that empower people's lives through client space information. Twenty twenty four, they divided a hundred fifty two educational programs to eighty two hundred eighty county residents. I'm on the advisory board of the extension, so I'm privileged to be able to hear about some of their great programs. And I wanted to just touch base on some of those. Crop diseases farm safety pesticide training, youth education and agriculture. Gardening including head start master gardeners cooking classes. Agronomy training, four H has agronomy training, leadership skills and. Training on a variety of court culture subjects, food pantry donations, seeds, pest evaluations and many more. And this also has an extensive network of master gardener volunteers who give that to the community. Twenty twenty four, there are twenty seven registered master gardener volunteers. Who volunteered throughout the county providing one thousand fifty four hours. With a value of twenty six thousand twenty eight dollars, they also donated seven hundred five pounds of produce to local. I'm also master gardener and master gardener diet politician, and I'm one of those volunteers. I feel I really can speak to the horticulture area. I have tape and disease and pest calls for Carrie Knutson when she's been out of the office. One week I had twenty calls and it went throughout the entire county. I think I spent at least forty hours between bribing, researching and looking at whatever those problems were trying to identify issues. I'm surprised at the number of calls and the range of issues. And the time it takes to provide proper answers. I also work with Carrie on junior master gardener program as well as various other health risks for culture. Throughout enough phase. We all the tasks. Thank you for your time.
Um, just recently, my husband attended online the pest applicator app or application. So that he could get certified to, um, to use pesticides on our fields. And that is done by N D S U extension, obviously agron, agri agriculture is the top. Uh, industry in our county and it's extremely important. That, uh, we continue to put pesticides on our crops that we grow so that they grow and we're able to feed the world.
Good afternoon, I have some handles, if that's okay. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Zachary Tomcik, I'm an attorney here in Grand Forks. And the internal advisor for the Greater Grand Forks Young Professionals. Been a member of G G F Y P since my college days at U N D, I can confidently say that this organization is one of the reasons I chose to stay in Grand Forks. Build my career and life. Here today regarding the proposed one thousand dollar cut to the twenty twenty six budget. As many of you know, the mission of G J F Y P is centered around three pillars, community involvement, professional development and networking or social events. Every month, we host events in each of these areas from volunteering, business tours, mentorship programs. And professional development sessions on topics like home buying, financial literacy and career advancement. Our membership has grown to over three hundred professionals, people who are choosing to live, work and invest in this community. Since the organization's founding, Grand Forks County has seen a twenty four percent increase in residents aged twenty five to thirty nine between twenty twelve and twenty twenty two. This rate is double the national average, that kind of growth does not happen on accident, it happens when a community invests in retaining talent. The support we receive from the Grand Forks County is critical, it helps us show young professionals, potential employees for local businesses. Teachers in our schools, help for workers in our hospitals, that there is space here for them beyond college, that there's a community ready to welcome them. County support also ensures that the public sector employees, including county staff, can access our membership at no cost. And there are many county staff members who regularly attend our events. I respectfully ask you to consider maintaining this investment, it's a worthwhile budget investment. And makes a lasting difference in how young professionals view Grand Forks County, not just a place to work, but a place to stay. Thank you for your time, if you have to answer any questions.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Chair Hagan, members of the Commission, Chief Fund, President CEO of Grand Forks Economic Development Corporation. First I'd like to say thanks for raising your hand to Sir Grand Forks County, it's never easy, it's a thankless job in particular in these tough budgetary times. I also want to thank you for your tremendous support of the Economic Development Corporation. I joined the E D C in two thousand and six and the county has been a significant supporter of our organization since that time. Thank you all, generally know what we do, our mission is to expand economic opportunity. Uh, for the region, for the citizens of the Grand Forks region, our focus is primary sector companies, so to grow the industry base, industrial base of Grand Forks. Um, the companies we support sell their goods and services outside of the region, but they make something here, so bringing in more resources. Um, our efforts are intended to actually raise revenue by increasing tax base and increasing other taxes. Um, I certainly recognize the tough budgetary times and understand that there's a need to tighten the belt and to look at cost-saving measures. Um, um, I had a chance to talk with a few and understood that day was coming, the number that I saw on the one year report was a little bit larger than what I expected. Uh, really, I could go down what we do in great detail, but I'm going to save you that tonight. Just would like the opportunity at some point to sit down with others, the select members of the Commission or the Commission as a whole. And lock down our budget in greater detail, walk through what we do and the services that we provide. And sort of our budget in detail too, for for full transparency. So I would certainly like a consideration of lessen the cut heads from the prepared documents today. Uh, happy to answer any questions, but look forward to future conversations with the Commission.
I'd just like to make a comment for those of you that are here, just please understand that it's this time, this document that was presented. That now is a public record, um, this was presented by Commissioner Bierte. And Commissioner Bierte shared this with us, um, at our last mission. So this is not, um, there's a vote of five here. And this is not a vote of five, this is one person's, um. Anecdotal, uh, look at the budget. So I just want everybody to make sure you're aware of that, that this is not, uh, being supported by the full commission. This is being supported by one individual out of five.
I'll just add that every commissioner had a chance to prevent information, I was the only one to do it. I don't want you to say.
And usually the budget period happens in June, July and October.
Okay, I'll just say, I got asked a question, I answered it publicly.
Maybe Commissioner Bierte was sending us with this information. Continuing to do information gathering and they're going to continue the budget process the way that we've done it in years past. And this is a good conversation starter and see where we go with it, so. Anybody else like to speak on the topic?
Madam Chair, this is Lou from the Veterans Office on the phone.
Lou Lombardi, oh, Lou, I apologize. Lou, we, uh, did you have a question for someone or did you?
I was just calling Madam Chair just to kind of ask for consideration for a lower percentage on my area that was identified in Commissioner Bierte's document.
Okay.
And I'm saying, recent past, we've been, uh, one of only two or sometimes one there for a couple of years, we had to verify with the finance area, Ms. Moorestead. That we were hit for nearly twenty thousand dollars in a budget decrease. And then it was also a couple of years there, we had zero increases or zero, uh, yeah, zero increases to our budget. So I was just wondering if we could, uh, just reconsider that for a lower percentage, uh, there's going to be increased costs here recently. That will make it pretty tough to meet that. I've been under budget for all the years that I've been in the department manager. And then also the, I've been very prudent with the, uh, resources there too, to keep us underneath there, so there's going to be a, there'll be a surplus, but I just don't know if it's going to meet that five to seven percent. Thank you.
Madam Chair and members of the committee. Thank you for this opportunity to provide public comment. My name is Chablae Weiss, this is Jessica Maranick, um, we work with the Red River Children's Advocacy Center in Grand Forks. I am a family advocate and she is the forensic interviewer there, um, we are also Grand Forks resident. Is it okay if we? So we, we have this one page handout for you that, uh, we just want to walk a group as well. Um, but first we would like to thank you, um, the Grand Forks County Commissioners, they're graciously providing funding for the work that we do. Their continued support allows us to continue to serve victims of child abuse in our county. Um, so what is the Children's Advocacy Center? To best understand what a Children's Advocacy Center is and does, it's helpful to look at how, um, cases of child abuse in Grand Forks are handled before we even existed. Um, so back in the day when a child was sexually or sexually abused, the child would be questioned by law enforcement, the human services. Human services professional, then maybe a doctor, nurse, then state attorney, on and on it went, causing the child to relive the trauma of abuse over and over again. Now with the Children's Advocacy Center, children, um. Only need to share what happens one time. And as a trained forensic interviewer, I talk to the children or the child at our safe and child-friendly location. No more cold and sterile police stations or medical exam rooms. Um, I've been trained to ask age-appropriate non-lead questions while our partners who work with, um, work on their case watch interview from another room on a closed circuit TV. These partners come from law enforcement, human services, dental health professional, professionals, prosecution and medical. Um, this allows us, allows for coordinated, all type of community response to child abuse. Um, and even if you aren't seeing these, you know, cases personally, um, in, in our community, we do see them quite often at our center, um, the types of child abuse we. We see a lot at the River Children's Advocacy Center in Grand Forks are sexual abuse, physical abuse, as well as neglect, human trafficking. Child exploitation or other witnesses to crimes such as witnessing domestic violence, um, or even homicide. And in our Grand Forks location, um, over the past six years, we have done an average of eighty nine interviews per year. Last year, we did a hundred and eight interviews and the server projected to do a hundred and twenty interviews. Um, Grand Forks population is about seventy one thousand people, um, fifteen thousand five hundred and sixty six of those being children. Um, and the suspected number of children in Grand Forks who have been sexually abused, not even all the other type of abuses we've seen. It's estimated to be two thousand and five hundred and forty, forty five children. That comes from, um, the National's National Children's Alliance, um. That shows one in four girls and one in thirteen boys are estimated to experience child sexual abuse. We do thank, um, the Grand Forks County Commissioners for graciously providing twenty six thousand six hundred and sixty seven. Dollars per year in funding our community's Children's Advocacy Center. The continued support helps offset the rental cost for our location, um, and that annual cost is forty thousand nine hundred and eight dollars. Um, our center is always open to answer questions, whether that's by email, by phone, um, if you want to set up a tour at our center to kind of come and see. Or space and kind of hear more about what we do, um, we are always open to that. So, thank you.
My name is Becky Martin, Chair Hogan, Board of Commissioners, I'm here to speak on the importance of N D S U extension in Grand Forks County. And light as a recommended budget cuts they are facing. And N D S U extension, Grand Forks County supports the youth in our county by building life and leadership skills in our youth. Four H youth are two point three times more connected to their communities, lead purposeful lives and participate in community service that non-four H. In addition, four H youth are one point nine times more likely to be leaders. Last year, the Grand Forks County Extension Office was able to reach four thousand six hundred and fifty seven youth through programming and four H. We currently have thirty active four H leaders in Grand Forks County that give an average of nine hours per month. To the four H program, for an individual volunteer, that is twenty six hundred dollars per year with a total of seventy eight thousand dollars overall. I have been involved in four H myself for twenty four years, I was an eleven year four H member, a North Dakota State Ambassador for six years and have been a leader for fifteen years and counting. My family has been actively involved in the Grand Forks County four H program since nineteen twenty eight. And has close to two hundred years of combined involvement. I can say that if it weren't for four H and the opportunities it provides, that I would not have the leadership competence or career success that I do today. Being a club leader, I have directly seen the benefits that the four H program has on youth. You've joined a local club that has members from ages five to eighteen, often they are incredibly shy and stay close to their parents. We're getting them involved in programs, activities and hands-on experiences, you will see you find their spark. The confidence that comes to youth from encouraging adult partnerships with the extension agents, club leaders and volunteers help them find that spark. I have many young adults in my club who have taken a four H experience and become active leaders in their high school and college activities, as well as in their communities. This past weekend, our club hosted a cooking workshop for our local community. Where youth could believe teaching their peers and their families about using food items that they may receive at their local food pantry. To see a young four H or have the confidence to speak and teach adults about food recipes is nothing short of impressive. The future of any community is in the hands of its youth, the world around them is rapidly changing and we have a responsibility to not only ensure that they are given the tools to keep up, but be leaders. Four H is the nation's largest youth development organization that helps shape young minds to think critically, collaborate, be proactive in their community and to make the best better. By empowering youth with these skills, we're fostering a generation of innovators, entrepreneurs and leaders who create meaningful change and make our community stronger. Funding the programs are not a cost, it's an opportunity, an opportunity to nurture tomorrow's thinkers, problem solvers and leaders, thank you.
Commissioner and rest of you serving, I appreciate, um, your look at the budget, appreciate your fiscal responsibility. Um, it's a tough time and I understand that, um, I'm here on behalf of Safe Kids today, the coordinator. Um, I've served in this role for twenty nine years, um, that kids have spent in our community for the last thirty three years. Um, for many, many years, Altrum, um, we, Altrum has always served as a league agency for Safe Kids Grand Forks. And they always funded the bill, um, for that. And yet, all the other communities around the country, um, as they put together their Safe Kids coalitions. They reach out to other partners who really say it's part of our job to be involved in injury prevention for children. And so, um, when COVID hit, um, we reached out to many of those partners in the area to say, can you assist with this? Um, the county has been very generous in providing, um, twenty five thousand dollars a year. And I just want to break that down a little bit, um, there are seventy two thousand four hundred and thirteen people in Grand Forks County. That accounts, if you divide that twenty five thousand to thirty four point five two cents. Thirty four and a half cents per person per year. For the work that we do, I want to give you a look at what our last two weeks have been. We conducted a water safety class at U N D in which seven hundred and eighty six students, a record number of students came in and learned lifelong water safety skills. From all over the county, we've conducted babysitting classes, we've had two safe at home alone classes, um, many, many kids are living in single family homes. Where they're coming home alone after school, they don't even know how to escape from a fire. We teach them in those class. We've hosted two medication take back events, one of which collected a hundred and ten pounds of medications. Today, we are at the Grand Forks Senior Center trying to make it easy on the elderly population, not having to get to a med take back event, we collected forty five point five pounds of medications. Many of them, um, drugs that you want to get off of our streets and out of our homes, number one, cause of poisoning in kids is medication. We have held, um, proceed checkup events, um, that we do twice a month on a routine basis. We also get routine daily appointments that are coming into our office, of people who have no seats. Or can't afford a seat, um, they might, many of them are people with, um, special needs children, um, that have special needs and they reach out to us and say, how can we safely transport these kids? We've provided bus consultation and training to the schools in our community and in our region, and we continue to do work in that area. Um, every single month, um, tonight, in fact, we're going to be hosting a foster parent training. During COVID, we started online virtual, uh, foster parent trainings where, um, they can come, they requested them from six thirty to seven thirty at night. We provide them online free of charge, they get their continuing ed for free so that we can encourage more people to become foster parents and not have to face, um, trying to figure out. Childcare or how to get their continuing ed outwards in. I could continue to go down and down the list of things in which we do, um, but one of the things that I think, um, should this cut, um, take place of the, the funding. I want to reach out to you as Commissioners just to say, um, that it will impact, um, the work that we are able to do and right now, um, we are covering. All of the calls from the county, um, when they call and say, we're placing a child in foster care and the foster parents need a car seat. We drop everything, we show up in the ER, we show up at the county building or we have them come to our office. Um, because those people have no seats, we're providing all of that training one-on-one, there needs to be a plan put in place, um, should a cut like this, um, happen. Um, we also are doing all the ones that used to go to, um, Grand Forks, um, public health, um, we're seeing most of those clients that are coming in, um, and providing that service as well. I want to take that thirty four and a half cents per person. And I'm going to make it really personal. Um, Sheriff Snyder, is it your friend of mine? And so this is my Callie. And yesterday, they were in a horrific car crash. And this is personal to me because Callie is somebody who has reached out. For help from Safe Kids to protect their family. That family of eight, it cost them two dollars and seventy six cents a year is what this, um, funding would be. Um, contributing towards the cost of saving that kid's life yesterday. Now, at Safe Kids, um, we oftentimes don't hear about the lives that are saved, we oftentimes don't hear that. Um, you hear about the ones that are lost, but I guarantee you that whether it's a water safety class or a car seat check or a babysitting class or our safety on wheels we're doing. Or because we have crossing guards or safety patrols at the corner, we are impacting kids' lives in a way that's probably touching every single one of us in this room. With a child, a grandchild, a niece, a nephew, a neighbor, a brother, a sister. Um, and I would just say, I hope you will, um, consider that twenty five thousand dollars. And I would just say, I hope you will consider that twenty-five thousand dollars and how well that money is spent on keeping the kids of our community and our population. Thank you.
You have a question?
Oh, yes.
April being month of end child, you sponsored the Hands on Learning Fair
We did.
on a Saturday. Do you have any idea how many attended that event?
We had about twenty-five hundred people, yes.
And we were there, my husband and I were there with our three grandchildren, and it was a wonderful event. And it's a free event. Lots of families attended. Lots of volunteerism from the military to early childhood programs, to many programs across the city. University was very active, but it was a wonderful, wonderful event. So, thank you very much for providing that for families with young children.
Absolutely. And just to be really honest, the role of Safe Kids is to bring together all of the partners within our community and our region and our county who say we care about kids and their safety. And as a mom and a grandma myself, some of the things that I think are my most important roles is to keep my kids healthy, to keep them safe, and teach them about God. And those three things, I, to me, can't put a price on those things. And so, I just ask for your consideration of the support that you provide to us. Thank you. Any other question?
You know, I would just, I would just like to reiterate what Karma talked about. You know, I've been doing crossing guard at Kelly School for twenty-one years. And a lot of what I do is because of you, keep kids safe. So, I appreciate what you do and how you do it.
Well, thank you. And, and I appreciate that, Bob. But I mean, really, it is about an amazing, amazing team of people who come together and say, you know what? I care about the kids for our community. And, and everybody helps in their own way. And so, I appreciate the support from the county in the financial way, and also in other ways in which the county supports the work that we do. So, it's a great team. I think we're doing a pretty good job. Let's keep it up.
Thank you.
Yes.
Chair Hagen, Board of Commissioners, I am here today to speak on the importance of N E S U extension in Grand Forks County in light of the recommended budget cuts they are facing. My name is Leah Mary, and I've been in four-H since I was five years old. There are many ways that four-H has positively impacted my life through real-life experiences. First, there are many educational opportunities that four-H has offered me, such as meet and livestock judging, leadership awareness weekend, and project expo. These events have taught me public speaking skills, to be prepared and learn more about what I like. Two years ago, I had the opportunity to speak in front of legislators about four-H, and now I'm going to share my love of four-H with all of you. Second, the life skills that four-H has taught me has impacted my life greatly. There are many events each month, and the best part is they, they are the same thing. For example, there are many cooking, fashion, and livestock events. These are all life skills that I will be using in my future. These events have also provided a way for me to meet new people. Through these experiences, I have found my spark for helping animals and people. I will use these skills to go to N E S U in the fall of twenty-twenty-six to start my journey into getting my vet tech degree. What can I say? Four-H has grown on me throughout the years. There's a time where I didn't want to go to four-H events, but my friends made me go. They thought that it would help me get more independent. I was a very shy kid. This happened for many years, but as I got older, I still want, not just because of my friends' baby, because I really, I really started to enjoy it and experiences it offered. I started going to more events, and I kept going more and more. Now, I'm at every event I can go to. There are even events I go to not as a four-H member, but as a four-H leader. I have become so much more competent since I started four-H. It may have taken a while, but I got there, and that's why I'm still able to talk in front of you guys today. I would love to see other youths get the same opportunities as me. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Leah Wazeski, and I am the Director of the Grand Forks County Historical Society. And I would like to thank you for the support our society has had through the years. The Grand Forks County Historical Society began in nineteen-seventy-one, and that was the year that the Campbell House was restored, and our museum has grown since then. We provide educational opportunities. We provide resort, research services for family historians and professional historians. In the winter, we have a lecture series that is attended by many older adults. But in, now coming up next month is school tour season. We'll have well over a thousand children coming through, learning about Grand Forks and Grand Forks County. What is unique about our history and our people, the cultures that have blended together and formed our county. I couldn't help but notice as I came into the meeting room here, the sign outside that says this room is dedicated to the pioneers of Grand Forks County. And I, I live with them pretty much every day. I may have prepared a speech for you today, but I was helping a lady with the genealogy question this afternoon. We serve people from outside our area. We're heritage tourism brings in more money. People that come to town working on family history and just learning about history stay longer and spend more money in our communities. So, our Historical Society provides a valuable resource that really doesn't fit with any other agency in Grand Forks County. Trying to not take up too much of your time. I know you've got a busy schedule ahead of you. But I do want to point out that the money that is appropriated for the ground, under the heading Grand Forks County Historical Society, is also shared with the Laramore Museum, the Northwood Museum, Mamwell, and Niagara. A lot of people don't realize that, so it's something, and in those, our smaller towns, those people are doing excellent work as well. Just kind of keeping things alive, remembering where we came from, where our values come from, and continuing that into the future.
Open it up to conversation with the board. What were some priorities our topic discussed today?
I'll start off with on the first of some, the form, some changes on the finance, talk about paying out the sheriff's building in five years, like to add in or sooner. We should try and get that preparedly paid off before the five-year market begins. Under, towards the back, I talked to Ms. Lobsted. And then I met with a soil, because there's a soil conservation, a couple of changes. Under the lead board, based upon how information is lost, it, all we can do there is freeze. We can't freeze it what we give now. We can't reduce. So, if you want to put freeze versus that, under the Extension Office, all we can do is freeze versus cut. Want to change that? That would be a freeze at the current funding level. And the Soil Conservation District is its own political subdivision. So, they can charge up two and a half bills, and we don't say anything about it. Just for everyone up here to know that the ambulance at six bills, the senior citizen at one mill, the point nine-one mills for the soil district, the point, the one mill for the garrison diversion, and the one mill for the medical building or state, which adds up to nine-point-nine-one bills that people think the county controls. We have absolutely, positively zero control over that. So, when those, we cannot reduce them, which means when they go up, those entities raise the taxes, people of this county, not this board. So, once again, that's the ambulance, the senior center, two from the state, the soil board, they set their own levies. And we don't control them. So, I just wanted to get that out, but those are the changes also. I want to remind everyone, we are asking the departments we do control at the county level to give buy the less. We have not hired an additional IT person that was requested. We did not hire the full amount of jailers that were requested. We have reduced the staff at the jail. We reduced the staff at emergency management. And we've made other cuts already in this year's budget. So, I'll, I'll make it very blunt here. We're cutting ours, not asking anybody to do anything. We're not doing it ourselves. Personally, as a Commissioner, I have the ability to have a life insurance policy through the county. I will not take that. I have the ability to collect, put into a pension. I will not do that. I have the ability to reimburse it for travel. I will not do that. And I will not take a raise for the next four years. In essence, I put my money where my mouth is. So, in closing, if you got the, you got an email, should have got yesterday, you maybe saw it this morning, on the projected budget through twenty-thirty-two. For us to get by with where we're going, we're going to have to raise taxes every year. I wish to repeat that. The plan is to raise taxes every year. If you live, for example, in the city of Grand Forks, and the city, the park, and the school will take what they could raise, then within six years at the most, that five hundred dollars you're going to get back from the state, all gone. Within six years. So, I'm just telling you, we're good. I'm cutting. The county's cutting. Things are negotiable. I'd like to thank publicly Economic Development and the Vets Office for offering to meet with us and cut some of their money. We cannot continue down this road. We need to go a couple of years of looking at what we can do. Then, is there a possibility we could change and go back the other way? There is. But for the record, I did not vote for any one of the five multimillion-dollar building projects that we now owe money on. But I will make sure they get paid. And I guess I'll stop there.
Make a couple of comments, then, Chair. In reviewing your documents, you talk about things that should be done at each category level, administration, buildings, grounds, finance, human resources. And I guess, you know, some of the things that you're proposing, like adding a new H R I T program. That comes at a great cost.
You mean payroll?
Payroll. It comes at a great cost. And it's managed usually and set up by I T. But yet, you're not supporting I T to have the staff that they probably would need in order to establish that program and make sure that that program operates successfully within our computer system. That's a, that's a computer glitch that I guess I
That is a rhetorical question.
I am not asking to vote for it.
So, you want me to answer it, or you don't?
No, I do not.
Okay, just checking.
I'm just making.
All right.
And so, I guess I, I question that. There was also a part of the document that, that, that said, setting the poll at two percent, I believe it's two-point-five. I don't believe it's two percent. I know, I know. And also, in taking the, the additional hours that our staff work away from them, I, I'd like to talk, I'd like to get the, the input from our staff. That's the most important thing within our county is our staff. And granted, when someone leaves with experience, that experience walks out the door and you can't replace that with the younger individual. Granted, we have younger individuals that start at the county and work their way up, and God bless them, because they become specialists at what they do. Ms. Nelson, I'll use you an example. Ms. Nelson has put in her retirement for June one. I think that that's going to be a historical move. You know, you've been in this role for several years, and you have a lot of experience in being an auditor and, and working in an audit role in Grand Forks County. And you will be severely mint. You take a lot of experience out the door with you. And you can't go and hire someone who would have that experience and knowledge base unless they work in this job. And I think that's something that we need to acknowledge. It's difficult at times, granted, to hire staff, and I understand that. I believe that also Commissioner Birkey, you have listed various cuts for certain programs. And I think that I would propose that that may be across the board instead of particular looking at specific ones, whether it's based on the lack of use of those programs or not, not feeling that those are necessary. I, I discourage that as the commission as a whole. We were voted by the people of this county. Yes, taxes are an issue, but we were voted by the people of this county to provide the services that are important for our population. And I know that, that we have tax issues, and I know that we have to look at cuts. But cuts, we've got a, a new operations going on with our correction center. We don't know what that's going to cost. We don't know what that budget is going to be. We're granted getting money from the Department of Corrections at over two million dollars per year. But what does it cost to house seventy acres? What does it cost to have them in there? It's not free. There are expenses that are relative to that. In our budget, about seventy to eighty percent of our budget is based on staff. Is that correct? Usually, that's how it works in a service industry. And I've been in the service industry for the past thirty-five years. And so, I do have experience putting budgets together. It's not easy, but it has to be a shared expense, not an expense that goes out on specific individuals. And we deal with citizens in this county from birth to death. Actually, after death, when it comes to the human service zone, because there are individuals in our county that do not have the resources for a burial, and that burial is paid for by the human service zone. So, I think that that's, that, that those are my concerns. I'll, I'll pick your budget apart at later meetings. And I, so can I. And, and talk about some of the issues. Nine-one-one is something that is now under the jurisdiction of the prior department. And I don't know if there is going to be a powers, a joint powers agreement anymore with the city of Grand Forks. That has moved. I sit on the authority board. I don't know if there is even going to be an authority board anymore. I guess that's at the discretion of the mayor. So, that is something that we may not be able to question as we move forward. And nine-one-one, I believe, is important to everyone in this town, whether they think they're ready to meet it or not, as well as ambulance. I think that's all I have to say for now.
Well, now, I'll answer your question, even though you don't want me to. As far as payroll, if we implement a system for payroll that's been within the last thirty years, eventually, we're going to see a cost savings. So, we will reduce the amount of staff time with the new system. And therefore, over time, it will pay for itself. We can be punching in on phones instead of the, the individual spend all the time he spends on. So, there will be a potential savings in that. And we need to look into that. I also want to point out, as long as we keep doing what we have been doing, we're not going to see things change. We have to look for ways to be better. And the reason why I didn't go with a blanket cut is because that's, in my opinion, a horrible way to do it. The reason, for example, emergency management area, I've asked for more because we're reducing in employees. If we just do a X amount across the board, there are some departments that are heavily people-only. There's not much to cut other than that we're going to reduce staff. By the way, have, have I made a comment about when you start laying people off? Because I don't remember saying that.
I didn't say anything.
I, I want to bring that up. So, I want to look at other areas. But I'm looking forward with state and breath to the debate on the budget. It's the most wonderful time of the year.
So, I know that you guys were looking into a different payroll system. Can you comment where we are at?
Chair Hagan and Commissioners, the directive had been to look at the payroll system, and we were focusing on a time and attendance piece. That is an ongoing, in fact, I have a vendor meeting, another vendor meeting on Thursday. Whether or not a time and attendance would change the amount of time that the current payroll person does, we don't know because right now we're doing certain things manually, but with that, we're needing to import things. Um, also, there are functions in payroll now that we are required to do that used to be once annually. Now it's for the week. So I could not say that this would be a significant savings. Um, we need to kind of determine, and it will take a combination of multiple departments to determine what's gonna be the best potential option. Um, to be able to satisfy the requirements of the Sheriff's Department and their type of payroll, as well as everyone else.
And can I just touch on you then? Sheriff Beerkey? Uh, you said that you made a comment that you haven't, um, looked at cutting staff. Do I recall within the last couple of meetings that you made a motion to fire our corrections center? So that's a cutting staff.
Yeah. If you're okay with people misappropriating taxpayers, maybe then I guess you're okay with it. I'm not. But yes, you're right. I did.
So you misspoke when you said you haven't cut anybody or haven't.
Well, technically I did because I couldn't fire him.
Obviously.
Okay, so I did.
But you made a motion to, uh, have the sheriff do it.
Well, that's, that's all I can do by law.
Um, and the other question, when you're talking about emergency services, uh, was there a choice of emergency services not to rehire that position? Or was that from your directive?
I didn't tell, I, I gave her my opinion, but I'm one of five. She, she chose not to.
That's your portfolio, but it was.
Okay, well, I don't live in the world portfolios where one commissioner can, can overrule the will of three. I don't live in the world you people live in. Uh, portfolios, the way they're set up now is, is one of the reasons we're in the dysfunctional area. We are because one commissioner is dictating what different areas of the county are doing and not letting the entire board have a discussion on that. So I gave my opinion. It's up to her to do what she wants. I told her I would vote if she wanted to, but that's up to her. And if she wants to bring it up or you wanna bring it up, feel free, and I'll vote against it because I don't think we need that person.
I believe Ari made that decision by herself and made the best decision for her department at that time, so. That was something that we had discussed. Unless we wanted to comment on anything else that I was speaking on, but.
You're not look, willing to look at anything, then what you're saying is you've never made a tax increase and money increase. And I'm already going to that debate. I am not gonna vote to raise, if there are three people who are, then they will. I'm not doing it. I said I'm not, I'm not gonna do it. We're gonna find something else. If you're answering, everything is raised taxes, so be it. That's that's the debate we're gonna have. I'm not, I don't live in the world where all the problems in this world are solved by taking more money from the taxpayers. They've had enough. That's why I'm sitting up here.
So I had Demi run, uh, a report. I know you had just commented that we aren't looking to cut across the board, but instead of going through and having certain departments taking more and more percentages away, I wanted to see what it would look like across the board after salary benefits, what it would look like from one, two, and three percent. Because when you said, Cindy, I think it's a really good idea to have department heads and the folks that work here to have a voice in this because they know their department desk. Yes, we're really bored. We make those decisions. We need them to come alongside us and have those conversations. It's that important. So I'm gonna hand this out and, um, you can prove that if you'd like. I just wanted to make sure we saw the dollars. Um, to conceptualize some of these decisions. So I'd like to have a conversation about across the board, having our department heads and anybody who gets money from the county to look at their budget and cut it from zero to three percent at least, if not more. And if you cannot find those dollars in your budget, you come to the commission and we have that conversation with you. I don't want to do a blanket because I don't, we just reiterated, some departments can't. They just can't cut dollars right now. But I think we all need to get on board and, and look and see where we can make those cuts, so. I'm open for a conversation with that.
No, I guess that's Madam Chair, I, I guess that's what, what I was looking at too, is just the way you have it outlined here. You know, as far as, uh, one, uh, one percent, two percent, or three percent. I think that's a, I think everybody needs to share the pain, you know, and, uh, I think it's, uh, uh, more fair to, uh, to, uh, go to all the departments. And for them to speak on their behalf, to see what they can do to help support what our mission is, which is to save tax dollars.
I know. I think that's a very good idea.
I think it's important to get the message across to every department and every organization over the years that this is, these are awful decisions to have to make. I mean, staring at incredibly bleak financial forecast, and bleak is probably an enormous understatement. And so, short of a miracle, we're gonna have a three percent cap attached to where we can live. And, uh, that puts us in a real pickle. Meaning from like last year's budget, we're gonna have to come down to what Demi was saying just simply abruptly. So, and that's, that's assuming we get a valuation that's, that's typical. And I'm sure we will with inflation and whatnot, but these aren't like, this is the meeting I've been looking forward to the least since I got elected. Because disappointing people that are doing great work is not a fun part of this job. But at the end of the day, one plus one still costs people two. And that's kind of what we're up against. So, uh, I hope everyone's a little bit understanding, not too upset with how this eventually turns out because we weren't hired to balance a budget. Unlike the federal government, we cannot run a deficit. We must balance this thing and we must forecast properly into the future with our future needs and services to, to remain steady. So that's, I guess, I'll get off my soapbox. Maybe I'll defer to Mr. Ford if you had any comments after having kind of had some type of digest of that forecast advice for that important.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Rusty, Madam Chair Commissioners. Um, looking at a lot of the documents that Ms. Nelson has worked hard, put together some forecasts and estimates. Um, and seeing the most recent, uh, that, that Commissioner Rusty, you had shared. Um, I do, from a staff standpoint, have to concur. Um, and this is just my professional opinion. That's some changes. The commission has some hard decisions to make, uh, moving forward. Um, more so now with the very likely possibility of the caps. Uh, and, and you look at, those are still yet to be perfectly defined on how that affects county or township budget. Um, it's even more difficult for, for counties with one source of revenue. Uh, and then reading the article in the Herald this morning about, uh, concerns about rural construction permits. Uh, and, and just the forecast model, Commissioner Rusty, I, I do think the commission has some difficult, hard decisions to make, uh, going forward. Especially knowing that caps are gonna happen. Um, I, I do wanna just quickly say, um, since staff came up. There are department heads and there are staff that are coming to me. They're concerned they're gonna lose their job. Which I haven't heard a commissioner say we're gonna cut. What I would just ask of the commission is before the commission has that kind of discussion, if it does, that the commission has exhausted every area to reduce funding. So I have been here thirteen years. I greatly value the county's partnerships and everything our partners do. But I wanna advocate for the staff and the employees. I just hope before those words or that discussion ever happens that the commission has exhausted every line item that comes out the door before we look at staff. I'll just leave it at that. Thank you, sir.
I think that would be something that we all would have, that every item would be exhausted, every place to find a penny would before any staff would be cut or benefits because that's not a conversation I wanna have. Any other? I'd like to look at this. Um, I'd like Mr. Ford to give direction to, or however we wanna do it, to the department heads to have those conversations, to look at your budget, see where you can make cuts if you ultimately can't. You know, we'll have those conversations with the commission as a whole going forward during budget season. But if there's a department and anybody that is getting money from the county, needs to come back and show us where they can save those dollars. So. Um, there's a new commission next week. It's on the schedule to send out budget for time. And it would be nice if we had with that, what would the commission? They're supposed to return them by the end of April. Well, I think having them look where they can cut, I guess I don't know where, how else to describe it. Requesting any, any cuts at all, anywhere between one and three percent. You don't, unfortunately, aren't gonna be able to have people come and ask for more money. That's basically off the table as I'm speaking out of turn. But in the budget that they are creating, we need to see where they make those cuts. Anywhere between one and two percent. If you do one, fantastic. If you can't, then we need to visit. Not excluding salary. Yes, very good. Excluding salary.
Madam Chair, a suggestion to, to Ms. Nelson's point. Um, the, the, the commission adopted a new budget system. We have a department head meeting tomorrow. We will most certainly be discussing, obviously, this. Um, we could, at the, at the commission's discretion, you can set a deadline so that, um, everyone who, again, departments and institutional partners need to provide where they could cut between that one and three percent back to finance by like, next Friday or something. And we, again, budget season, special meeting to come together to discuss, is this what the commission wants to be going forward? So that at the next commission meeting, some directive can be given so finance can set the fight, send the budget out, just, just a suggestion.
No, I agree with that. So.
Well, it's next week. I'm sorry, I heard that incorrectly. Oh, that's okay. That, that's worked. I'm sorry.
By the commission that we would send them out. I don't think it would be that bad. I'm not sending them out. I don't, what is, what do you, I think they need to start with. I think they need to get a jumpstart because it's probably gonna be a tough thing to look at.
I just wanna point out on my chart, I had zero to three percent on it already. And the ones that are higher is because I've gone through the budget and there's a reason they're higher, and I'll go through them. Uh, the county fairs, they have to eventually stand on their own. I made it very clear to them. We can't keep funding them at that level. The computer in this year, they were budgeted for a person we didn't hire. So therefore, next year's budget should be able to go more than that because they didn't have that extra person. Under the Regional Youth Assessment Center, she gave me a document, which if I remember correctly, was three point six percent of cuts. There's that. Under Emergency Management, there's a position we're not gonna fill that was in two thousand and twenty-five that's not gonna be in next year. So it should be more than three percent. And then her planning and zoning, we've eliminated a consultant at about thirty-five thousand a year. We should get it for, hopefully, the services to the city for no more. Don't know for sure. I'm hoping five, six, seven thousand. I'm not sure. The reason his is hired is because we're cutting something. We've already cut it. But it's in this year, so it needs to get carried on to next year. So I would agree with the zero three, but feel free to go higher. And some of them can go higher.
That's why we're gonna have these.
Yes, I just wanted, I just wanted to pass on, this wasn't done by darts. I just wanted to point that out.
Chair, sorry you took so long. Just, just some follow-up questions based on the, the commission's direction. Um, on the one to three percent. Some, some follow-up or maybe some, um, clarification for staff going forward with Mr.
I want to be very clear.
Commissioner Beerkey had some, some other items, so I just, again, make it clear. So obviously, the timekeeping payrolls, we're looking into that. That's already been directed by the commission. Salary plan already been directed by the commission for, for staff to look into that. Um, there were some job descriptions to be modified. Um, talking with Mr. West and Commissioner Beerkey and his plan, taking two existing staff from Mr. West's staff and, and looking at two foremen. Um, also looking at, uh, Mr. Gresheski's and Ms. Leon's job descriptions as well to modify those. Do we proceed with, with that or not? And then would those be effective in two thousand and twenty-five or two thousand and twenty-six? Um, other, other proposed reductions, other requests, central purchasing. Um, I think that's, that's something the county should do, and I, I, I'm happy to have both discussions. Looking at P C cards, um, I know that, that's on the list. Financial statements from all entities receiving county, uh, a list of entities receiving tax incentives that county participates in. Uh, Mr. Beerkey, Commissioner Beerkey's usually mentioned the sheriff's building paid off. Uh, implement weather policy, eliminating comp time. Uh, looking, need a little bit of direction, uh, because those were in this Commissioner Beerkey's budget proposal, but looks like we're gonna go in a different direction. Do we still move forward with those items? And I would, I would advocate for the two foremen, uh, the facilities manager and the project manager job descriptions to be revisited. Uh, and then the other items listed up, but up to the commission of course.
I guess I don't know what he's talking about, but that would not be that good at the last. Well, the foreman wasn't, oh, yeah, you know.
So, yeah, this was a two foreman. Uh, their current supervisor at the highway department supervises twenty-four people. I don't think there's another supervisor in the county that has twenty-four people underneath. And the issue is, he can't be everywhere at once. We have multiple projects going on. Say they're working on a bridge. Technically, he's not there. There is no one there in charge, just four people working. And so this would be a, this would be a, uh, it's kind of like an upgrade from the, uh, the sheriff. He talked about the, uh, transport, the, uh, would be like, uh, equivalent of the deputies over here as opposed to a jailer. So this isn't a massive increase, but it is somewhat, we need people of authority out there on some of these projects. It's just impossible for him to be supervising in person, three projects, say, at one time scattered across the county. So that, that's, the rest of this stuff is frankly, if you don't wanna approve it, then I'll just give a list to him as the one commissioner, and I'll ask him to look into it. Because I, I, what can we, uh, you can't get janitors hired. You're, you're starting to pay for janitors. You can go to McDonald's and get one. So on some of this stuff, I'm advocating spending more money because it's, we're, we're living in fantasy world. So we've gotta look at what we're doing, the turnover and the time we're wasting constantly hiring people at a rate that we can't get who we need for what we need, then take the message. We're not paying it. And maybe it's other positions. I don't know. But I'm just saying is some of this stuff we need to look at. And, uh, in general, um, some of this is somewhat related to the budget, but it's also just efficiencies and how we do things. So hopefully we'll have a budget impact, but it's also just in general some information. But, uh, I just wanna throw it out there. Uh, the foreman was just, uh, it's somewhat equivalent to what we're doing to jail. And like I said, I, I've gone through some organizational charts. I haven't found someone that supervises twenty-four people. That's a lot of people to keep track of, especially once in the summertime, they get scattered out in all different directions and small teams doing things. So.
Like, do you know what the difference in?
No, that's, that's why you look at it. That's why, I, I don't know. I, I don't. I'm just saying, that's why I'm asking to look at. This isn't, we're not doing it. We're looking. And so is this something we wanna look at? I think it is something we need to look at.
Other than the manager, other than the two foremen, uh, under human resources. Um, chair, field captain, B G director, project coordinator. Uh, that's what I was reporting to. I'm sorry.
And that's all an old list I got, that the county was theoretically looking at at one point, or when the jail chain stands. As we mentioned by the sheriff about the captain and different ways of doing things. So none of that is. As we mentioned by the sheriff about the captain and different ways of doing things. So none of that is new. Anybody up here, that's on the list. All the old papers I'm digging through.
I just have a question and maybe it's for alien, maybe for Miss Steel. When we provide comp time to our employees, that's the time they're traveling, they're coming back from a meeting, whatever the case may be. If they're spending over 40 hours a week working and we don't give them comp time, do we have to pay overtime then? So that might cost a lot of money.
I. I don't know what I've said then.
No, you put comp time, eliminating comp time.
So comp time is going to be closed, the county office building. And so we pay a sheriff deputies out there and work, we're giving them extra comp time because this building is closed, which he's not even working at. It makes, it makes no sense to me. If you don't work in this building, why are you getting comp time because this building closed, which hopefully in the future we won't be closing so often? That's side note. We were copying sheriffs and jailers and highway department people, et cetera, who are working because this building was closed. I don't understand that. If somebody could enlighten me as to why that's a good policy, I'd love to hear it because I'm baffled by why we're paying somebody extra while giving them comp time. Because frankly, if the, I'll give where I live. If the post office closed, not take customers, doesn't mean I'm not going to be out walking. And so I should get extra comp. What that's called? That's your job. Suck it up, better cup and do it. So that's where I'm at.
Michelle, can you describe that a little bit more detail?
So Chair Hagan and Mr. Searls, I think we have a slight disconnect in language. Currently, if the county office building is closed, those positions that are identified as safety sensitive get additional pay. They don't get comp time. They get additional pay for those hours. So I just want to make sure. Yeah, or one to four, whatever it is. So if they are working during the hours the county office building is closed, then they get additional pay. The comp time that Commissioner Peach was talking about is different. Like in my department, I don't have an overtime budget. When Leroy works more than 40 hours in a week, it gets calculated out as time and a half of comp time. And I figure out during a period of time where he can leave early here or come in late there or take a day of comp time instead of vacation. So I wanted people to understand that we're kind of having two different conversations. The additional pay when the building is closed was in place way before I ever got here. And I think that the thought process may have been, and it seems to be across many counties, that it's kind of a fairness piece, I don't know, but it is something that the commission could definitely look at about whether or not that additional compensation or that additional payout. So I just wanted people to be on the same page that this is what it means.
Okay, just to follow up then, now it's even worse because we're paying them. At night when the building is closed, are they getting extra pay? On the weekends are they getting extra pay? It makes no sense. Their job has nothing to do with this building. So see, we're paying them extra just because they're out doing, they're working anyway. They're essential personnel. That's your job. So I don't know what the rest here are, but it's insanity to me. So I guess we know how I'm voting on that. But I'm just saying that I I don't get it. The jailer's still jailing, the sheriff's still sheriffing, and the power's still plowing. Doesn't matter if this building's open during the day, doesn't matter if it's at night, doesn't matter if it's the weekend, but it's time to work, they go to work. And their job has nothing to do with this bill.
We need to know what is compensation in the building as well.
Probably 1923, who knows? What are you paying me? Because I understand the comp, I get that. I've done both.
No, just.
You said.
You know what? Yeah. And what makes it a little clearer? All of building closure pay, building closure pay, because it's being paid when this building is closed. That's a nice way to. Yeah. And it wouldn't matter if the building was closed for weather or whether, or if it was closed because we didn't have electricity, which has happened in the past.
Side note, so this building does have electricity and we're paying a sheriff for Laramore in the area patrolling Laramore, extra pay because the power went out this building. Seriously? I hope I driven this part home. Oh, thank you. The horses did. Let's bear him along.
I do like the review of credit card holders and policy for reviewing purchases. I think that would be a. We review them all. Yeah, every department, so we can bring them all for the commission to know we don't want to.
Well, I do want to talk, since you brought it up, we'll talk about, there's things that are charged on there. I have no idea what you're buying now.
Did you look at that report?
Wait here, can we just, just for the, no, I didn't, it's time to read 100 pages for, so maybe you have answered it, I don't know, but I'm just saying. The the point is, the point is, another thing is, can we get off of, you're getting picked on? Can we get into the world of transparency and accountability? I'm not saying anybody's doing anything wrong. I'm just saying it's, let's be transparent, let's be accountable, is this being double checked, et cetera, et cetera. This is not a comment on anyone's personality or who they are or what they're doing. This has to do with financial scrutiny. I personally, I've mentioned to Mr. Ford, I think in the special project coordinator, if that's your title, that we should include in that a grant compliant, grant compliant officer aspect, where all the grants, the county, they, then they would review it and maybe Miss Womsted has to get involved to make sure we're doing what the grant says. All we're doing is just covering ourselves. All we're doing is doing that double check. So if there's a process in place, we'll go through it. If it's covered, then it's covered. But I brought up things I'd like to look at. Because if I don't know what the bill went for, just a generic word, how do I know what they're buying? Does anybody here know what they're buying?
He's in the budget and the department has those up to certain dollar amount. As long as it's in that regit, then they are allowed to buy it.
Well, I see my issues. I see my issue is some of this stuff could be part of the central purchasing, then we could reduce some of that. I just. Let me say this too. I'm not saying all my ideas are good. But can we, can we just look at some things? Maybe, maybe there's a couple darts I hit on the wall, they're okay. And so once again, it's not a comment anyone, so don't take it personal. It's not, it's just accountability. Ask my wife what happens when the credit card, credit card book goes in my house. If I don't have a receipt, we're having a little discussion. It's not a comment on my wife, it's just, that's how I roll. Accountability, transparency, double check. It's not a bad thing.
I feel like I just read it, but. So. And it's $5,000. It's $10,000. They can discuss it with me if it's in their budget. The two of us can approve it. Beyond that, ask the commission.
And I do, and Chair, I do give credit to the program managers and to tax and finance because it's not like they're all blowing money. And and granted, central purchasing is a good idea, but are we going to micromanage everything? That's my question.
I think we talked about this before and I I believe it's things like pens and paper and sticky notes and things, one central location, so we're not all going out and trying to find all of these deals. And I, I'm not even sure if I have a special answer, but like so, like so Amazon Prime or Amazon, it was a purchase that comes a lot on the expense report. We have one or does multiple departments have different Amazon accounts, like we're paying for an annual subscription multiple times, or how does that work? Does anybody know? Just an open ended question that I would love anybody to.
There is an Amazon business account. But not, like my department, I don't pay for Prime.
I I see Amazon come up, so I'm just wondering if the Peach department now that they're.
I'll tell you, I do read every bill. Did it while I was in the city? I'm going to keep doing it here. I I'll read every bill.
Dragon, we do have a Amazon account at the sheriff's office and we do make several purchases for other departments, which Ms. Olson in our office bills out accordingly when they're ordered.
All right, any other comments or suggestions or? They already have revenue from the round in the.
That's why I asked. Check it off the list.
Great. Okay, is that clear though for direction for the department? I just want to make sure that everybody knows.
Yes, ma'am.
Looking forward, obviously. All in.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We're at information technology director. Answering questions on my request on my day. You all have it in front of you.
Ooh.
On the floor with first and second. Say aye.
Aye.
She have her on the phone. We'd be having breakfast.
We'll get this going. Okay. Mr. Schneider.
I'm sure members of the commission, thanks for your time. Lost on back, obviously today's meeting, I could go on longer than Mr. Beerke did, but I will note that he does have several terrible ideas in my opinion, but he has a lot of really good ones too. So I'm glad that, you know, that him and the rest of the board are willing to sit down and talk with department heads about it. Some of my initial concerns that I'd bring your attention is if you add up the correctional center budget and the sheriff's office budget, that is 50% of the county budget on the list that you have. If you expect me to look through that and make zero three percent cuts in week, you're dreaming. It's not happening. So we will keep doing our best to look at those and one thing that I do agree with Mr. Beerke on is that sometimes spending a little more money pays off a lot in the long run. Which I hope that I can prove with County Correctional Center. And the biggest point in that, not to get too far off task here, is with the hiring and retention of employees. The feedback that I've gotten at this point is from multiple, I believe I've had over 30 responses now that lack of leadership there is something that really be desired. So just trusting that individuals that are in a position of power are doing everything that you want them to do because they've been here and they know how to do it isn't always the truth. I will steal another quote from Mr. Beerke that we live by in the sheriff's office, we just name it a little different, trust but verify. Trust that they're doing their job, but every, what we call it is minding the store. I own a business. I train the people in there to do the job. Doesn't mean I don't show up on a Tuesday and make sure that they price the Doritos what they're supposed to be. You have to constantly verify it and we are trying to bring that trust and verification in the, in the county jail at this point. I'll get back to the, but to the agenda at this time, that's all right. I'm going, first thing that I have for the board is a request for to sign a grant that has been reviewed by the state's attorney that I will spend appropriately on the amount of $71,340 for Operation Stone Garden. It's a request for a signature, we have applied for a larger amount, we're just waiting for verification on the rest of it, but this amount is approved for overtime costs to assist the federal government on the border with illegal crossings. So I'm looking for a motion to approve sheriff's signature to accept that $71,000. There is no, there is no cost match, it's 100% down.
First. Second, further discussion, who's in favor of the motion? You say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. I'm going to skip the jail update, I'll say that for last. I'm going to go to the home wave, I believe I had home wave on that. Sorry, it's been a wild week and a half. But I was brought into a discussion now being the oversight of the jail that with the new addition of Pod Four, that we need to add services for the inmates wherever they're coming from. So they have the ability to communicate with the outside world, whether they deserve it or not. And Home Wave is our current carrier of services for that in the facility. I will stand right here and tell you that I am not a fan of Home Wave after what we dealt with with them a couple of years ago. But with time of the essence right now and a tentative's open date of July 1st, I don't really think we have options to consider. So I did negotiate the contract terms down to what I felt was more palatable for the county and for myself because I don't like being locked into technology agreements. I mean, who gets a new cell phone every year? Like they're, they're dated in what, six months? Now you want me to lock into a contract for six years, I'm not doing that. So the agreement, thanks to Ms. Womsted's review of this contract, she did catch an error. I was able to speak with Home Wave, they did address it with their attorney today and they provided me a new copy. Basically what I'm, I'm bringing to the commission's attention. I'm bringing this to your attention because the commission and Ms. Womsted worked specifically on this Home Wave existing contract due to these significant issues we have with the past. With the tablets and the other issues. Since you guys were the ones that, and women were the ones that approved the last contract, I felt that I needed to bring to your attention before I just threw a signature on it. We can discuss these going forward if, if I have approval to just sign them or not, but this is a fairly significant contract in my opinion. What this says is that we're looking to make an amendment to the contract that's existing, which is what was done, I believe was a year and a half or maybe two years ago. The amendment is to add eight additional kiosks, which would all be located in Pod Four. Which is, I think it's Pod Four, is that we're going in? Pod Four, so I don't know. I'm still new here. So Pod Four, add eight kiosks in there for their, for their use. The the change that I had them make was the opt out clause. I did not want to be locked in for five years, so they they verb it so we can opt out between December 5th, 2026 and the December 4th, 2027. Which would, the price to us would be whatever the cost was minus depreciation and their labor. I did request them to put in a condition similar to what we have right now, which is an opt out prior to the end of the contract at Northview of the county. And we shortened that so in two years, if we want to get out, get them out of there, we can get them out of there. Honestly, my hopes are, the way that these companies are, it's a gold mine. They're everywhere, they keep coming up all around the country. Some are small, some are getting big. They're all getting better. We are going to find if they're the best ones, we're going to keep them, but they should be able to allow myself and the net, the next individual that's running that facility, time to go to some conferences, speak to some people, host some things and make it a competitive bidding process. They need us, we're, so we need them. So we can just go with reliance here if we need to, but that should give us enough time to get settled. I can get my feet wet a little more. We can make an appropriate decision on that. So this contract is written, the signature lines are written in the way that it is signed by an individual in charge of the correctional center. If, and I'll stand for any questions on this, comments, concerns, my only thought was reliance right now is local, they were in there in the past, they're currently in the facility wiring up stuff, so they technically know where the wires are running. I could reach out to them and see if they're interested in providing us with a bid for Pod D. But I really don't know if that gives us enough time or them enough time where we can get this place going July 20th, July 1st. So unfortunately, I feel like I just have to suck it up and we'll take this one.
Yeah. Madam Chair. Do we make money on, we'll wait for these.
In specific areas, yes, we do. There's a new. There's a new FCC ruling where after a certain date, we're no longer allowed to collect. Commission on certain services that they provide. Our end date on that is, I believe, next April. Still absorbing these things. So I did have a concern that if our commission. Concern, question is our commission gonna be cut if I sign a new contract, if I sign a new contract, reliance is in. People are paying stupid money to send a text message, more than I pay for monthly vehicle use, like it's unreal, so. They said, no, if we sign this amendment, that will not impact the commission that we're set to collect the likely that's next April. But after that, there will be significant changes. Which is a significant line item that I took note of, that we are going to lose funding. I'm just requesting from the board unless, you know, you want me to look another direction, permission to assign this or have the chair sign it off, either way.
Yeah, I think we need to get rolling on it, so I made the motion to approve Home Wave. With signatures.
I have a question, you mentioned a typo, I found one on line thirteen. Is that the typo?
Yeah, it's fixed, the, the years, yeah, so the years are updated to December twenty twenty-seven to December fourth, twenty twenty-nine. Their attorney updated, when I told him I wanna change the clause, they clearly just updated one of the lines.
The sheriff can sign it.
They'll send you the copy when they have their signature on this one, or just the.
All right, reverse and second, all who's in favor of the motion.
Aye.
Thank you, one more thing that was not on the agenda, but I will mention it. Both the city of Laramore and the city of Northwood had council meetings last week. And both councils approved the troll-up contract. HR was able to get out a posting today, so we are now advertising for Deputy Sheriff. To fulfill that contract, so thank you for moving that forward. It's, it's gonna be great for the west side of the town for sure, and, and for the city of Markwood. Last thing I have on the agenda was jail update. I think it'll probably be appropriate for me to do this for a little while. There's a lot. I'll try to keep it, I guess, pertinent to things that you would actually be interested in knowing. If I don't come with a update. I will the next commission meeting, I'll try to do at least once a month, or, or the time being. Last week, you probably saw Grant Porch's herald, herald article. I will say that it was fairly accurate, thank you. But it was, the, the question was posed to me if. Mr. Burkeholder was let go due to the recommendation, the county commission, I said, with all due respect, I listen to the county commission, I'll take their comments under advisement. But I, in this situation, I do not need to follow the recommendation, and I did not. It was my decision, Mr. Burkeholder was not reappointed last Tuesday to his duties. We have assigned an interim jail administrator, Jordy Hillby. She has been with the county for many years, sorry, I don't have the exact amount. But I think longer than I have, so twenty plus. She was selected for multiple reasons and. The jail is now aware that there's a new standard. That you do have to report to people. There are supervisors, you would expect them. The supervisors are not an iron wall. We need to hear your ideas so we can make changes. And I get it. Myself and Sheriff Ross had a different type of leadership, similar but different. And when I took over, there was a long time for people to adjust, even though I was there for fourteen years. I cannot imagine how long it's gonna take some people in the jail. I guess that maybe it's good news. That most of them are fearful that they potentially may lose their job, because that makes it easy, all you have to do is your job, and you're not gonna lose it. It's a fairly simple concept. We're working on multiple things, like I mentioned, for officer retention at this point. I'm glad to report that we did just close the, the hiring post that we had, or the over the open positions we have right now. And we are going to be interviewing ten individuals that actually followed the instructions. My knowledge, and filled out the application and returned it. So we're fairly hopeful that we can get, get some people in there that are, are interested in the position. On that note, another thing with the change. Is that we have now had multiple former corrections officers reach out, interested in potentially coming back to the facility. Which I see as a benefit, which will save us on training costs. I would, I would encourage the commission, I know that some of you may have been made aware that. You've been encouraged to maybe watch the budget to see how it increases under the sheriff. Expenses under the sheriff going forward. And as mentioned, sometimes you have to. Spend a little bit of money if you wanna make it work out better and retain it for the long run. The amount of money that the county jail spends. Basically having to put on an academy almost year round, I don't remember the last time, I'm sure HR does, we went a month. Much less. Two meetings in a month where we have not had. Employee status form on somebody from the correctional center. It's unbelievable, so my goal is to start reducing that and retain them, so we're not wasting. Thousands and thousands of dollars of our employees' times, which are the higher paid employees. Training new ones, only to have them leave. I was quite shocked when I looked at. The flowchart that I was provided from the jail. To see the lack of experience in that facility, the amount of people that worked there two years or less. Is just shocking, and my goal is to change that. The amount of people working there ten years or more. Unless I'm wrong, by my counts, you can make on both hands. And not use your fingers twice. Ten years, ten years, and there's over seventy people there. So we are working on that. I did mention last commission meeting that we are working with the food vendor on several mistakes they made. To date, we have reviewed the invoices that they have sent. Over the last two years, and I've currently found already another additional three thousand dollars in overages that we've paid. One of the accounts is over one thousand breakfast meals. That we paid for in one day, in a facility that we house, average two hundred people in a day. We're addressing it, we're getting it refunded. That's, that's the kind of things that we're finding, we're now probably over. Combined with the ones that, well, the one that just came in, and the ones that were previously brought to my attention, right when I took over, were over, I believe, six thousand dollars. In, in payments in excess to summon food from Grant Porch's County on bills that were signed and approved, not by this guy. Another thing we did to save money. Weird concept, something's broke, ask somebody if you can fix it. We reached out to Mr. Grzeszky. After, all I've known since I've been taking people to that facility the last sixteen, fifteen years. And it, you can melt a completely frozen car in probably less than five minutes. I thought they just liked it eighty-five degrees in there. Apparently there is some throttle control, gas valve things that I don't know about that were broken, I asked Mr. Grzeszky's team. To turn down the heat in that place. And he found that, or his team found that these things are broken. They were ordered and replaced in a week and a half, you're going to see thousands of dollars in savings and gas expenditures, because the garage is no longer eighty-five, it's probably about sixty, sixty-three. Sixty-three degrees in a garage. And we're not paying extra money to cool down the boiling sodas when we put them in the vending machines. So that was done, another thing that we're working on. Is I've been working as well with Mr. Grzeszky, streamlining some of the invoices, which was noted by Commissioner Beerkey. I mean, I, i- it's just gonna, it's just gonna take time, but I have no business reviewing. Mr. Ramberg's invoice from Menards for a five gallon bucket of paint. That's under buildings and grounds, I'm not gonna say, no, I'm not paying that bill, it's not getting paid, that falls on Mr. Grzeszky. So we're working on that, I've had discussions with Ms. Nelson. And Mr. Stefani. And due to some unfortunate events recently, we have not had a meeting. Yet, but I'm planning a meeting with all of them, so we can. Just move these budget lines out of the jail and under buildings and grounds where, where they belong. And if that doesn't work for budgeting reasons, then. I will just sign over those line items to Mr. Grzeszky to coach his stuff. I have no business worrying about air exchanges, it's just not my job. Also, to note, we have now scheduled multiple correctional officers for training. That they have not been allowed to attend since COVID, in person, they've only been doing online training. We're physically sending people to training. Starting very, very soon. And I will spend that entire line item this year, which is a mere ten thousand dollars. And I'll work on increasing that, but it's somewhere else, moving into twenty-six, because. You cannot put a price on training, especially in a correctional facility or a law enforcement role. I guess I will mention this. As we were all made aware, last commission meeting. That the commission does not have the ability to hire or fire for persons under the sheriff. That being said, I have an interim jail administrator currently. My. My. Permission, my request or notification, however you wanna deem it, if you wanna motion on it, that's great, but I wanna bring it to your attention that at this point. It could change, depending on the information that I get moving forward, but at this point in time. My intention is to most likely name or, or advertise internally and externally. For a jail captain. That captain and the name might, might change. That title might change to major, chief jailer, I don't know, but we're gonna figure it out in the very near future. And I would like to advertise for that position, that position will report directly to me. It will be technically running that facility like the chief deputy runs operations at sheriff's office. I will also. I also plan, and again, I guess I'll ask permission, however that works, I don't know if we need to or not, but. That, that position needs to make more than people they supervise, if it's actually gonna function, and I can hold them to the threshold. Of responsibility and, and the standard of excellence that I expect in that jail. So I plan on that being advertised somewhere on, starting at a hundred and five thousand minimum. Probably up to a hundred and ten, somewhere in there, so I would.
Madam Chair. So Chief Deputy Strongberg, what, what does he make?
I, great question.
Thank you.
Because it should be.
Yes. Cause you're one forty-two, right?
It should be comparable, I would think, because then you have your two second in commands at both places. And so I think those salaries should be comparable.
Commissioner Ross, members of the commission, I've had discussions similar like this with. Other sheriffs in the state. And job descriptions can get tricky. Because there's different. They're both very important roles, right?
Yeah.
The, I'm not gonna say that jail has a higher liability, because they really don't, like we, we're trusted to shoot people, so. Patrol deputy sheriff on the road enforcing laws and whatnot. Some of the dog job descriptions are indicating that. The, the level of responsibility and liability is higher in that position. So we will definitely have that discussion with Ms. Steel moving forward.
All right. The number you're discussing. It's very comparable.
Okay, so. Cause I just, I just think, cause I've been through it. If you don't. Pay comparable, you'll get somebody not happy. You know, and it should be like a chief deputy jailer.
Yeah, right, right now, Commissioner Ross, the captain at the jail is actually making less than two of the lieutenant, lieutenants that he's supervising.
Well, I just wanna throw in. Mr. Strongberg in his job, how many years versus somebody who's just starting, so if you hire a new person, starting out with somebody at the top end is. Where are they gonna end up? I don't know with the debate, we gotta run through. Do little charts and graphs and all that, but. They're not comparable, because you're hiring someone new for us, and comparing to someone that's been around for forever.
Unless you get somebody.
Well, that's why, that's why it's.
That has probably about same amount.
And that's debatable, that's correct, I'm just saying it's, it's a pen, so. That's why do the little numbers and graphs and see what comes up, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, for, for the board's obviously knowledge. I still plan on taking over several, which I have currently, several of Mr. Burkeholder's duties, especially the billing. I take response, my name's going on them, it's all coming through me to get approved. And that's how we find errors, I'm assuming a lot of the duties that, that Mr. Burkeholder was doing, doing. The captain, in my opinion, moving forward, will assume some of those duties. But the beauty is that in our. Short-sighted review, the duties amongst the current lieutenant positions there will be able to be distributed significantly. As you said, some people are gonna be doing more. So that's already things that we're looking at, splitting up the workload, so it's appropriate and people are compensated as they should. So the reason that I wanted to bring this today is because. There's not another commission meeting for a long time, and my intention is to have. This position advertised for, hopefully prior to the next mission meeting. So whether it's a notification, or the commission has any concerns of me moving forward. However you wanna handle it, it will be within the budget of the current jail. Budget.
If you're looking for a motion, I'll make it.
Well, I, I mean, I, I don't think I, I am, but I don't, I know that the commission had established. A, you, you just had it the last agenda item, right, that the request to hire, okay? Technically, I don't need probably to, to do the request to hire, is that a notification? I mean, I just don't wanna, I don't wanna upset the commission saying sheriff's doing rogue now.
If you change the classification title of the job. Then you would, wouldn't you? Michelle?
So typically, as an elected official, he can do whatever he wanted within his budget. And in the past, I've worked with Haley when she. Did similar things to legal secretary twos. And then it was more or less a. Notification, so.
Madam Chairman, to the board, the Schwarzenberger decision that we discussed at the last meeting. Does provide pretty bad discretion to the sheriff for hiring and firing decisions. What it also provides is that the board holds the first string, the budgetary decision. Which I think that can be interpreted as. The board determines the, the grade and step for the. The budget allocation for the number of STPs that are. Employed by the sheriff. So I think it is a cooperative decision, ultimately, the hiring and firing is up to the sheriff for that Supreme Court decision. But the first strings are yours, so I think there would need to be the approval of the board. And Michelle had indicated typically happens through a job description in, in grade and step assessment. To align with the county employee policy, because that authority is received.
When, when he wants to add deputies, we are, so we are involved in the process, so. I'll move approval to begin advertise, I'm gonna call him the captain for her. I'll move approval for the advertisement of the jail captain position. Well, that's part of it, that's part of it.
What I included in your, would be a job description to determine the dollar.
Yes, I just assumed that they'd have a job description.
All who's in favor of the motion, you say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, and, and my.
So I was just gonna say, one other thing in the budget, and I sent this out to everybody, but. In the budget, we need to talk about Andy Settler, who he's taken on a whole lot of responsibility. Uh in the budget, we need to talk about Andy's that he's taken on a whole lot of responsibility. So that needs to be a discussion to be had also. And one other thing, Andy, uh Robin brought up to me, and she's talked to David about this. Lex pole. He wants to get involved with Lex pole, which is a good idea. It just, there's a lot of liability with that, even now, also.
So Commissioner Ross, that's actually my last bullet point. Thank you. Uh but before we move on to that, and and I'm again, not trying to create an argument. Job description does exist. We're tweaking some words. They're not reporting to the administrator, reporting to the sheriff. Looking at just some minor changes. You're most likely not going to get a new full blown uh job description. Uh but my interpretation of Schwarzenberger on that is the county established my budget for employee salaries. So as I stay within that and don't go over, I'm like, I'm not gonna pay somebody two hundred fifty thousand dollars to be captain. But if that'd be in violation of the budget you already set, so um again, just. My perception of it. So and and we can get that approved, because that's not an issue. Uh so the last thing that Commissioner Ross noted is, uh like I told you last commission meeting, we did. Purchase a policy, electronic policy manual, Lex pole. We uh Chief Deputy Stromberg has formed a committee at the jail that is reviewing policies and working with. A specific individual at Lex pole twice a week for two hours a shot. Uh to date, they have already published sixteen policies for the correctional center, which is. Pretty significant because we're not publishing policies on the standard operating procedures. We're digging into the ones that. Are pertinent where we're gonna make changes uh like sickly. It's a disaster. We're gonna figure that out. All people are disciplined. We're going to work on that, like we're setting a new standard so people know what the expectations are, along with. Uh responsibility being dispersed amongst sergeants. So that is happening. Uh to note, as Commissioner Ross noted, our partnership potentially with juvenile. Chief Deputy Stromberg did advise Lex pole to leave the language in in their policies to address juvenile facilities as well. So that is a possibility moving forward, and obviously you would just look at some sort of potential costs shared on that.
And and so, you know, just one other note, you know, what I liked about Lex pole when I was sheriff, it was like. With the old policy, you know, people would read it, and so then something would come up, well, did you read the policy? Well, yeah, what does it say? Uh with Lex pole, you get tested at the end. So it's like you need to understand it.
On that note, we're incorporating that called daily training bulletins. So it's an app on your phone, policies in an app. And a daily training bulletin is every day of the month. There's a new. New scenario and Chief Deputy Stromberg or whoever is going to manage that policy manual at the jail. Uh can simply go in and address issues that we're currently having, whether that's being late for work. Not appropriate, they're not notifying your supervisor in time, not using FMLA appropriately. Uh not proper dress code, taking two on breaks, smoking within twenty feet of a door. We can click those policies and Lex pole will generate scenarios. And filter those in to the three bulletins in the month, and you have to read the scenario. And at the end, it says, what's the correct answer? So that just reinforces the policy manual as we see violations. That's the current process we use in the sheriff's office too. It works great. Uh with that, I have nothing further unless you have any questions for me.
I'm sure you have a question. Um you made the comment of the sixteen million dollars that you're overseeing now between the correctional. Ability and the sheriff's office. Um is the budget in twenty twenty six? Uh I I'm assuming not that the seventy correction law or the seventy prisoners that are coming from. Department of Corrections, I are they included? Is that included in the budget for twenty twenty six or not?
Uh I have not seen a twenty twenty six budget yet. Matt, um Madam Chair, Commissioner, you're talking about the anticipated lease revenue? We'll we'll be able to work something into, I would think, Ms. Nelson's department or we'll be able to. Estimate some coming revenue.
But I'm assuming though with the seventy prisoners coming in from Department of Corrections, there's gonna be additional expenses. That would be on the budget that may not have been on that budget at this time, when the budget was generated last.
To my to my knowledge, any revenue that is uh received from housing, uh inmates from other facilities goes to the general fund.
But that would still, there's still gonna be additional expenses on the jail. Yeah, that's what I was asking. About the additional expense.
The new jailers were in this year's budget starting first of July. So they're only, they're they're gonna be there for the full year, I guess, to be the food lottery, so the more of mine, but the. The personnel was already added in.
Madam Chair.
Just be extrapolating out for a year.
What what Commissioner Pete's question, what really wasn't biting before was. When that that potpourri on the line, so you have food service, food delivery turned down. Um utilities, heating, cooling, sanitation, things like that. Those, so we're gonna see those costs. Um which is not in the sheriff's control, obviously, but so that to your question, yes, we'll see expenses that will.
Thank you.
I mean, prior to me taking over the jail, you've seen over the last three and a half months. Uh jail administration come to this board and say, oh, we need to put in buttons, so we need to we need to tint windows, which. My knowledge was in there, then taken all of it later. Uh so I mean, there's been several expenses that you've already been approving the last. Four months for that addition. Uh to that note, I I don't recall if I mentioned it last time. How did I mention what the other sheriffs? I've got two county sheriffs, Oregon counties reach out to me, asking if they could once again start housing prisoners in our facility. Uh so we do have individuals eager to house people in our facility that apparently was not. An option. I don't know all the details. Doesn't matter, figure it out, but we're gonna be good neighbors. Because people break in the Long Porce River, probably break in Long Ground Porce County as well.
Yeah, so very much that boat will go through in Walrus County.
If we, if we have an extra ninety two beds or eighty two beds. I guarantee you, you can have people drooling on every pillow and every bunk.
One last note, good luck to your family. Hope they heal up well. I guess Kelly has surgery on Thursday.
We can talk about that all Thursday.
It's gonna be a tough couple.
Three months. Well, good luck.
I ask you for any decisions, I think. So hopefully this is just an update and uh to ease one of the listeners to you. So. I was uh asked and wanted to give a legislative update. And unfortunately, the two bills that I think we really wanna hear about, they haven't made a decision yet. So. Was really thinking they would have, and they, but they haven't yet, so. I could keep this extremely short. I could give a real quick update, but thirteen eighty two, which is the gas tax and twenty twelve, which is the state DOT, which is what. Massive bill that they blew up, bunch of highway stuff in there. It's still undecided. I have in here as of April tenth, well, as of today, this morning. It is still undecided on. Um so the big topics to talk about, I don't think are ready. Um I did provide a couple of copies. For the board on some decisions that were made, there are lesser known bills. I'll just say one that's gonna affect us is ten sixty five. That's funding for townships. Changing it instead of just lump sum for township, they're going for a mile, which is good for Grand Porce County, because we're a well-developed county. We have a lot of roads per mile. But it's how you define that line. And I don't, or the members, but every other year I come to the board and you approve. Um or we we approve a a list of miles. Our county needed a massive update in our system in twenty eighteen. I believe it's pretty current. Um that's, I think it's accurate. But that that decision for uh. What they're defining as a mile and what qualifies can change. The one qualified before might not qualify now, so we need to get that figured out, but it was approved and sixty five was approved, so. And the governor signed it, so I think it's gonna be good for us. It's gonna raise some funding for our townships. Uh the next one I had in here was fourteen forty four. Thirteen seventy four, I know I know this just affects township, it affects me greatly, where as a township official. Challenge we have is we don't have any staff. A township doesn't have any staff, so if two supervisors go up, look at a culvert. You're breaking century guard, because it's open, it's a meeting. Well, you can't cut down business, you can't do anything. Townships are just really tied by that. Anyway, this exemption that was approved in thirteen seventy four is wonderful. I did submit some testimony I've had uh just written, but um so I think that was a wonderful change. Uh another one I'd like to mention is fourteen forty four. Association did oppose it. Um it grants more authority to the county, but it takes it away from the township, so it's kind of a give and take, but. If county wants to take a, take a township road and make it a county road, they could essentially do that now. We may have to, but. I hope that doesn't create problems. I don't think it will for us because we don't absorb too many township roads very often. Um and then I had in here also twenty one eighty three, and I bring that up because our association has. The county engineers association has wanted to increase moving violation fines for a long time because. Frankly, it's a joke, and I don't have any problem saying that as an open medium. You're speeding, you're on a traffic signal, all those, the fines are cheap. Well, one way in the state, but our association has tried to get moving violation fines increased over the years. Trying to discourage that operation. Um but they did get approved in construction zones, so it's kind of a big step, so. And but the big ones, gas tax, I think what they're waiting on that one. Is they're waiting for a decision to come to DOT budget. So I mean, if I'm gonna get a bunch of money in other ways, they're probably not gonna pass gas tax as art, which would make sense. But if all those get denied, then maybe they would do the gas tax. That's what the association is thinking. So um. Other than that. Uh eleven seventy six passed. Um or excuse me, it did not, sorry.
The township bill number.
Uh which one? There was two.
The one that uh took it from a lump sum to funding by the mile.
Oh, that is ten sixty five.
So just if you can come back when it when it'll settle out those two. That's all. Just so we all know, because it's a potential increase of revenue there, so. Whenever that comes up, that we can, that will always be evidence of that. Thank you.
Any other questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh members of the commission. So just some general updates, I'll be brief. Uh at the March eighteenth county commission meeting, Commissioner Beer, he asked, I'd uh. Update on contingency balances for the new youth assessment center and correctional center addition. Uh or contingency balance is zero. Uh contractor contingency balance, four hundred and seventy six thousand nine hundred thirty seven dollars. Heat and snow allowance, thirty four thousand one hundred and nine dollars. Uh ground thaw allowance, uh zero. I'll make a note though that we as as the OAC, if you will, our owners, architects, contractors, we've moved. Some of that snow and ground thaw allowance around to cover some of the changes that Commissioner Ross has brought to the board in the past. Uh miscellaneous allowance, nine thousand four hundred thirty four dollars. Um happy to answer any questions, but.
So so that miscellaneous nine thousand three hundred thirty four dollars is money left over from the ceiling. Or they're building that new health department. Uh they don't need that money, so we've already used part of it. And so it it could be easily moved into owner contingency at some point, or wherever it's needed.
Um if if no questions, um quick update on the parking ramp. You probably have already noticed that um RSI has been mobilizing in the ramp. Uh they've been staging their equipment. Um I'll be brief on this, and then if there's any questions, well. Mr. Greshes is gonna send out an update to all the county staff and tenants, but I think as April, April twenty eighth, still the targeted. There there's gonna be some closures in the ramp, however, we're gonna try to avoid closing the entire ramp down. RSI can do it in stages. Uh they're confident. They they do this a lot uh with much, much bigger communities and much bigger rounds. So um the plan is for the first level to stay open. There'll be some shifting around on second and third, but you should be able to avoid closing the entire ramp. Um the areas that are sectioned off will be closed. We're always gonna run the risk that someone's gonna do something silly, which is can't, even if you close the ramp down completely, can't control behavior. Um but Mr. Greshes will be sending out a more detailed plan later. This way, paying customers can keep their their spots, and you all probably saw the the herald article about the city's closing their two. Parking ramps for for construction, so trying to keep it easy on on people. Uh the uncertainty um is there might be a stretch where we do have to close. Uh when it, when when it gets to a little further down with membrane and traffic coding. But again, RSI thinks they can do it without closing, so it's just that quick update. Um and then the last thing I have, yes, the last thing I have, interstate parking, they uh they have the cities. Uh parking ramp and parking enforcement contracts. They reached out to me, um the city sent them my way. And so they're they they're interested in sitting down uh with myself. Uh I've invited Mr. Gresheski and Sheriff Schneider as well. Uh to meet with us and see if maybe they can help us in a similar fashion. I'm interested in hearing what they have to say. That's that's all it is. It's just hearing what they have to say. Um they do parking enforcement for the city in the two ramps and maintenance, obviously, these things that need to be. Flushed out with Mr. Gresheski and the sheriff, and if we like what they're hearing. I'll come back to the commission with an update. It's always a course of commission decision, but just wanted to let the commission. Make you aware, uh they reached out and we're gonna sit down and just. Uh that's all they have. Happy to answer any question.
Well, regarding the ramp, I don't know where the city is with that old water treatment plant, what they're gonna do there. I'd appreciate you or the appropriate staff member meeting person, uh keep in contact with the city. Uh our ramp is half empty. So we have parking available, if they wish to funnel down some this way for a cost, for price. So I I don't know what they're gonna do there. I don't think decided yet, but we should stay in the loop on that because we're not really that far away.
Uh, Richard Beer, I actually have a meeting with the city because they're feeling on Friday. I'll add that to the agenda.
Uh I have a fair board meeting and uh we continue to prepare for the fair, and this is, this should be, too many people have gone now. This is gonna be the highlight of their night. Uh the fair's gonna have a dump tank, and I tell you, this is a golden opportunity. I volunteer. So this is your chance to take it down. So uh I'm gonna be asking some other people to join me in that list, um but I will be. Barred weather or something. We're gonna have a dump tank and uh it's your shot. It's your chance to give back. And I must admit, I probably have some comments ready to go if someone were to miss. So I started mentioning that. Try to generate revenue for the fair. Save us some spending money on our own. Thank you. So, I started mentioning that, try to generate revenue for the fair, save us some spending money our own, thank you.
Um, the N D S U extension had their board meeting uh. About week and a half ago, that went very well, the library board meeting is tomorrow afternoon. And the human service zone meeting was today, one of the things that came out of that is the low income. Heating and assistance program is no longer going to be for a section of the year, it's going to be annual. Uh, application process, so that'll be a good thing. Um, we're not sure yet where the li heat funding is set at the federal level. But at least at the state level that they've done this annual signup, which will be much nicer than it has been.
Uh, just construction meeting this morning that uh. The YAC got out at the correctional center, so that we discussed most of what we talked about, so, that's it. E D C's, I mean, any other contingency plan, if there's a. Budget change in light of some comments, um, and so that's, it's good that they're being proactive. Uh, at an airport Thursday.
I don't have anything additional to add, but we've discussed it, so. Um, I'm finishing to visit the Grams guy in voice. That was in the correspondence, right? Very good, alright.